For March 13th, 2023. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmembers on, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm very pleased to say that we have a commendation tonight for somebody who is a well-known name in our community for many, many years. And I think all of us who live in Bellevue for the last 20 years have bought produce when this man was selling it. And we are here to commend him tonight. And Councilmember Lee, it was your recommendation, so I would like you to read the commendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my pleasure indeed to celebrate Bill Pace's life and also to commemorate what he has done for the community. And so it's my pleasure to read the following. Whereas Bill Pace, a long-term city of Bellevue resident, passed away in late 2022 at the age of 92. He left a rich legacy through decades of channeling his energy into serving neighborhoods and the entire city. And whereas Bill sold produce in Bellevue for 68 years, first selling peaches out of the back of his station wagon in the parking lot of the Boise Cascade lumberyard where he was a sales manager, and later operating a fruit stand and vegetable stand at the Mercer Slough Blueberry Farm for 13 years. And whereas he also operated a cafe and produce market in the Newport Hills Shopping Center, contributing to an effort to revitalize the shopping center and neighborhood. And whereas Bill was a Bellevue Kiwanis member for life, serving as a advisor to the key clubs at Newport High School and Sammich High School. And he regularly supported Highland Community Center programs for people with disabilities. And whereas friends describe Bill as the kind of person who would give you the shirt off his back in the middle of a snowstorm. And whereas we are grateful for his service, believe in the community, and time and steadfast commitment to the resident of Bellevue. Now therefore, I on behalf of Lynn Robertson, Mayor, and on behalf of the Bellevue City Council do this 13th day of March in the year 2023 thereby commend Bill Pace for his dedication and meaningful service to the Bellevue community. Signed, Lynn Robertson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. And I know we have his wife, Mary Ann, here, and his son, Ray. Would you like to come up and speak to this? And then after, we can do a picture together? You don't have to touch them, they will pick you up. So go ahead and sit down.
All right. Well, yeah, I'd just like to say thank you very much for this tremendous honor. You know, I'm sure Bill would be very, very proud of all. He was happy to serve his community in every capacity. He loved working, I'm sorry, the key clubs and with the Kiwanis and trying to get back to the community. And, you know, he loved what he did, everything he did in the produce and the business and interacting with all the customers, you guys, and everybody else here in Bellevue that would come from afar as well to patron our market. And, you know, he loved doing all that. So, you know, he would be very honored, I'm sure. Yeah, and, yeah.
It's very hard to thank Bill Pace enough for all he's done for the community. And so this is our city's opportunity to show our appreciation. Thank you for being here. Can we do a picture together?
Of course, yeah.
Okay. Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. City Clerk, is there anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are five pre-registered speakers. And as usual, I will remind everyone that oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes. And each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. And only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. In addition, I need to remind folks that in accordance with Washington State public disclosure laws, there can be no campaigning or support or opposition of ballot measures or campaigns during oral communications. And with that, I will start calling our first speaker, who is Jody Alberts, who I believe is joining us virtually. Ms. Alberts, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. On behalf of the Bellevue Chamber, I'd like to testify this evening in strong support of the proposed ordinance that would extend various permit timelines as outlined in the staff materials for this evening. The development community has been negatively affected by factors such as rising interest rates, inflation, and uncertainty in the status of return to work. Through these unpredictable circumstances, determining effective ways to support continued economic development within our communities will truly be key to combating negative consequences such as increased financial burden to business stakeholders, abandoned construction projects, or underutilized land. Extending the life of these permits, especially for projects that have slowed considerably due to such factors, would create flexibility in seeing these projects to their full completion as the market stabilizes. I'd also like to emphasize the critical nature of timing for this policy. While other areas of the permitting process can be addressed at a later date, taking swift action now can make all the difference in the number of viable projects in Bellevue, given the current economic climate. We're very proud to stand with plush member organizations such as NAOP in supporting the timely passing of this policy as it currently stands. In closing, I want to genuinely thank staff for their incredible work on this important issue and for the opportunity to give my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that we turn the volume down on this, it's painfully loud.
Next speaker is Jack McCullough. Mr. McCullough, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, your time begins now.
As a mayor, should I speak more quietly?
Yes, thank you.
I will, I will try to whisper my comments here. Thank you very much for, I'm sorry I can't be there with you in person. You know, we've all been through these cycles before, and here we are again. And I commend historically the city council for taking action in the past during COVID, during the Great Recession, to deal with the kind of issues we're trying to address now. So we have been working closely with your wonderful staff, with Greg Schager, your building official, with Matt McFarland, City Attorney's Office, to try to craft a proposal that can be acted on quickly, right? And so we took our, we took our direction from what the council had done before, not try to raise any new major policy issues, but try to identify some important extensions that could be granted quickly by the council to provide some breathing room for these projects. And I think that's what you have in front of you today. I can assure you that we've been coordinating with virtually all of the major developers in downtown and in the growth centers in the city with regard to this. They're all watching closely. They all endorse this effort. They applaud the work that the city has done in this regard to give them a little more runway to get to the other side of whatever we're dealing with here. And there are undoubtedly some other issues that we could take up to provide additional flexibility. But as I said, we've tried to work this piece of legislation in the way to provide a scope that can be acted on quickly. And if there are other larger changes, other issues that should be addressed, then I think those are discussions that we can continue in the days and weeks and months ahead. Obviously, the council has the opportunity to take other action in the future as may be warranted. But this is an important step, and I think will be applauded, as I say, by all of those who are watching and waiting to see how we get through this particular phase. So we appreciate your pick action on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Kunsler. Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Well, unclear, hope you can hear me as well.
We can, thank you. Your time begins now.
All right, thank you. I want to speak tonight mainly about the request for remote access. I think it's something that should be normalized. This week is Sunshine Week, where we celebrate open government. So I want to encourage you to look at your open government policies and encourage more remote access so that at a time of a climate emergency, people can work from home, participate in civic affairs from home, and actually ride transit, the transit board meetings, instead of, in the case of several board members, transit board members at a different transit north of King County, said, oh, I have to go to a PUD meeting, I have to go to a transit meeting, I have to go to a New York City Council meeting. So remote access is really important. And this Friday, we are honoring the merger of House Builder 229, which's last year allowed for remote access at Emily Wicks. It's washingtoncog.org if you want to get a ticket. Also, I can't help but say, you know, when we advocate for open government, we don't advocate for hate speech or silencing voices for the expression of hate. And you do have a troubled individual in your audience who's under PDC investigation, again, in part because of his abusive public comment. And I just want to draw that line delicately this evening. I wish the community well and hope you're able to enjoy sunshine. We can participate as you see appropriate. And I want to thank all of you for your awesome continued public service as council members and mayor, and of course, staff. I don't think you hear that enough from the open government community. And I think that needs to change because we can't have these remote access and community-building events without world-class support staff. So thank you for all you do. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speakers are Henry Bananik and Ricky Rui-Medanik.
Dear City Council, you might have heard of Coal Creek, a trail close to Cougar Mountain Wildlife Preserve. You might already know by now that a developer is building 35 houses in Coal Creek. These are the reasons I think we shouldn't build houses there. First is the waterfall. The waterfall is about 10 minutes away from the entrance to the hiking area and close to the entrance of the proposed houses. There are so many wonders of the waterfall, including a few salmon in the river sometimes. A salmon run is when some salmon are at the end of their life cycle and are ready to reproduce. They go from the Pacific Ocean all the way back to their destination, the salmon hatchery. The runs are already dangerous, with eagles snatching them out of the water and bears ready to go into the river to get food. With 35 houses near the river and polluting it, the salmon will have a harder journey to complete. Another wonder of the waterfall is the waterfall. It has a platform underneath it, which allows us to walk on it. There are some rocks on a fallen log to help you on your way. But with houses, it ruins the view of the sky behind the waterfall. There is also a relaxing ambience within the water impacting the platform, the waves hitting the log, the rocks, and the animals living around it. And in conclusion, these are my reasons why we shouldn't build houses in Coal Creek. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Dear City Council, I really hope you can save Coal Creek. One of my favorite parts about Coal Creek is the nature and the great things you can find there. For example, I went on a hike with my metal detector and found this little metal disc. There is also a cool log area with a log that I love to climb on. I love the plaque that talks about how railways used to carry the coal from the mines. The caves are so cool to look into and think about what it would be like to go in there. If they tear out 65 trees, it would disrupt the natural flow of the wildlife. A tree that falls is forced is food for bugs, and the bugs become food for other animals. Finally, Coal Creek is free roam-ish. If the houses, if there are houses, I would be afraid of trespassing on them. It would also disrupt the flow of a coming lock with a big luxury house in front of you. Coal was very important in the past, and the houses might cover up the history because it would become someone else's property. That's why I hope you can save Coal Creek. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for your comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker on the pre-registered list is Alex Zimmerman.
I suggest you go home now.
Zhehai, my dirty Nazi pig from animal farm, a crook, a criminal and bandito. My name, Alex Zimmerman, I candidate for ship to the moon. Someone spoke about something, but this made me totally sick because how many idiot and crook work for us government? I think 100 percentage, maybe 120, I'm not too much sure about this. Yeah, so I got a call, Bellevue School Board starts speaking, and after five seconds, they take me out. Yeah, give me trespass for six months. Yeah. So situation right now very simple because I thinking they have too many problems and try kill almost 1,000 babies. Yes, it's my opinion. They look like a Nazi concentration camp. It's okay. So six policemen come and they give me few trespasses. So I complained to these trespasses because I have right appeal to parking recreation. Is this crook, you know what it mean, give me today answer. You see this answer? It's no sign, nobody signs this. And I spoke with manager before for 20 or 30 years dozen time. He's responsible for crook and you mayor in three time in row, you know what it mean? You're responsible too. Look what they did, you know what it mean? They don't give me answer of my appeal. They absolutely 100 percentage crook. So how is this possible? 35 year I live here, and I cannot find one honest man who work for government. You supposed to be sitting this chamber for 10, 20, 30 year. How is this possible? Can you explain to me? This happened with school board, this happened with crook under manager, you know what it mean? Who crook by definition, because I complained to him for many years dozen time, it's never working. So situation right now very simple, and I demand investigation. I demand school investigation because 50 percentage children right now under stress and mentally sick. It's official public. And quality of teaching fallen by 30 percentage. You sit in this chamber for dozen year, this not happen for one year or for one month. This happened because you dirty crook, you know what it mean? Never doing about us children. 18,000 children, they brainwash. I live here 35 year, so not surprise me. So two generation of children, they brainwash 35 percentage what for Democrat. Same percentage what is have a dog Hitler in 39. You understand about I talking, you Nazi dirty pig. Why this analogy? Because you exactly Nazi. So right now to speak to 150,000 Bellevue citizen, clean this dirty chamber from this crook and idiot and Nazi pig. Thank you very much.
That is the end of our pre-registered list. At this point, I would ask if there's anyone else joining us here in council chambers or online? If you would like to make a comment to the council, please raise your hand. And Ms. Dean, I see your hand, please come up to the podium.
Good evening, council members. I wanted to thank you for your commendation of Bill Pace tonight. And I especially wanted to thank Councilmember Lee for getting that started and making sure that that happened. You beat me to the punch because I was going to submit that. I've been thinking a lot. I love the Pace family. They became my family at a really important time in my life. And I just feel that the city of Bellevue is a much quieter place without Bill Pace here. He was a man with a rye sense of humor, a big laugh, and a big heart. You know, there's too many things to list that he did for this community. But I am always eternally grateful for what the Pace family did for Newport Hills. Bill was somebody who believed in taking chances on people and places. He took a chance on Newport Hills. And for two glorious years, we had a gathering place that we have not had since. I miss it very, very much. I miss the Pace family very much. I just, I just wanted to thank you for that and to say that I am somebody who will never forget Bill Pace. And I know there are a lot of people around the city who will never forget him. So thank you.
Thank you. There are two additional hands online, though I will say, Joe Kunsler. Unfortunately, Mr. Kunsler, we can only hear from each person once. And so the second hand is Patrick S. Patrick, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Satinadon, longtime resident of Bellevue. I have three questions for you this evening. One, I mean, two involving policing in Bellevue and one involving public participation in these meetings. My first question is, I am repeating from the last meeting, why don't Bellevue police have body cameras? That would prevent them from making stuff up on incident reports. I have several fine examples of creative writing, which I will not go into in detail. I am trying to deal with them legally, which leads me to my second question. Oh, and by the way, the last police officer I asked this question to said city council did not allocate budget. Okay, that leads me to my second question. I heard in the last meeting that you are budgeting for additional police officers, but you don't seem to have a proper office of accountability yet. From what I can gather, having submitted complaints to the office of accountability, it is one police officer who puts on his office of accountability hat for a couple of hours a week, that's my guess, sends out form letters saying your issue is being investigated, has been investigated, or whatever. I find it kind of surprising, given the budget. Bellevue's a wealthy city, home to many big companies. And the council seems to have budgeted plenty of funds for luxury activities, I would consider, like an artist's village and the like. I find it kind of surprising that there has not been, there have not been funds allocated for what I and many others might consider basic infrastructure. A police force with body cams, a proper office of accountability. Which leads me to my third question. What happens to questions asked on this forum? Do they get a reply? Does anybody bother to respond? Or does somebody assign an issue number and file it away in a filing cabinet where it sits with the rest of the issues? Those are my three questions. That's about it. Oh, I made it in time. Good evening to all. Thank you for listening. Patrick Satinadon.
So as a rule, the council does not have a conversation with public comment. But I think there's a lot of misconceptions that you're basing your commentary on that I'd love to have cleared up by the city manager. So perhaps you can reach out to him later, and/or if you'd like to say something now, you can. Your choice.
Mayor and council members, there is money budgeted for body cams in our budget that you approved more recently, like a year and a half ago. And we will reach out to the speaker tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I'd also like to say for public commenters who come to speak about things that have nothing to do with the Bellevue City Council, like the school district, maybe when people sign up, we could give them advance notice that this Bellevue City Council has nothing to do with the Bellevue School District and their decisions. Okay.
That is the end of our raised hands. I don't see any additional raised hands. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a request for remote participation for March 27th. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the remote participation of Councilmember on during the March 27th, 2023 city council regular meeting.
All those in, oh, is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have a request from Councilmember Lee for an excused absence on March 27th. Is there a motion?
I move to excuse Councilmember Lee from the March 27th, 2023 city council regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, did you say that right? 20, March 27th?
Yes.
Okay, good. Somehow I heard you say something different. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce our one and only study session item for tonight?
Senator Lee, Mayor, thank you, Mayor and council members. There is one topic on your study session agenda this evening, and that is consideration of a staff proposal to extend certain building permits and land use actions in response to current economic conditions. And just by way of background, the city has a longstanding history of being proactive to changing conditions in our community, as you heard from some of our speakers this evening. Tonight's staff proposal is another example of our Development Services Department pivoting in light of some of the changing conditions impacting our development community. Again, staff are seeking council consideration and direction this evening. Joining us at the table this evening are Greg Schrader, interim co-director, and Toice Wright, Liz Sted, also interim co-director, both from Development Service Department. With that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to you, Greg, to begin the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'll start by noting that council has heard from several groups and individuals regarding the proposals being considered, including emails, letters, oral testimony earlier this evening. The actions recommended by staff respond to concerns we began hearing from a large segment of the development community late last year. We believe that this responds with a reasonable extension time period that strikes the right balance between different interests. Of course, we're happy to continue discussions with other parties who have...
Pardon me, Greg. We have an interruption in the chamber right now that we need to either take this conversation outside of the chamber or ask that the conversation end. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. As I was noting, we're happy to continue conversations with other parties regarding the interests of the development community. I'll just take a moment to talk about the development process and how it typically works. I'm sure most of you know that it usually starts with the land use phase, and that's often referred to as the entitlement phase. That later leads to construction permit application if the project chooses to proceed forward. This evening, we'll be discussing possible extensions to both the land use entitlement phase and the construction permit phase. Liz will address the land use phase, and I'll talk about the building permit extensions. So the question of extension of approvals, land use approvals or building permits is directly related to vesting law. And vesting is the action that establishes which codes apply to the project. For example, at the point in time when a developer receives a land use approval, that establishes certain codes. And the date when a building, a complete building permit application is submitted, that establishes other codes that pertain more to the construction of the building. So that is really important in this discussion. The intent of vesting law is for a developer or a property owner to have assurance of a fixed set of codes and requirements that pertain to the entire life of the project through the design and application review and construction. The intent is also to ensure that projects are built to reasonably current codes that reflect council policy direction, for example, innovation in construction, advances in building safety, or environmental stewardship, just to name a few. Last, I'll note that the permit extension proposal we're bringing council for consideration this evening for building and clearing grading permits is identical to extensions that were granted by council action in 2020 during the pandemic and previously in 2010 and 2011, following the housing crisis and ensuing recession. So staff are seeking direction on three proposals. I talked about the 180-day permit extension ordinance for building and clearing and grading. I talked about the 180-day permit extension ordinance for building and clearing and grading applications and issued permits. Second, to initiate a land use code amendment to grant the land use director limited authority to extend land use vesting. And third, embedded within the second, for council to retain processing of that land use code amendment. And Liz will discuss number two and three more, in more detail later. Our agenda this evening, we'll start with an overview of the concerns that we've been hearing, as I mentioned, starting late last year. We'll provide a brief development update. Council heard a similar presentation on development activity in October during the budget process. Not much has changed, but we do have year-end numbers to share. Then Liz will outline the development services process improvement work that's just being initiated, and will describe the details of the proposed extension ordinance and land use code amendments to allow extended vesting of land use approvals. So, the developer concerns that we started hearing, and which you've heard some of this evening, the office market is uncertain and is in transition. We have employers and employees jointly determining the future of telework, and it's unclear what, how that will impact the office market going forward. We've seen announcements in the tech industry, including workforce reductions. There has been inflation of construction and land costs. Those are still very high. That has not corrected interest rates, and this also impacts housing projects. It's not just office or commercial. So, these projects really need the benefit of extensions. The development activity, as I think we described in maybe a little more detail back in October, we're in a 10-year development cycle. There are still many projects in the pipeline. That's still very strong. But as I noted, with office market in transition, some projects are choosing to slow their progress through that, the review process, and that adds to the need for the permit extensions. There is certainly some risk of recession. I believe council heard an economic development update on February 27th, and another is planned for the spring, possibly in May. You've seen this chart before. It represents the permit application volumes, so the gap, and as you see, it's still quite high at the end of 2022. The gap between the two lines is the pipeline that's still in the review process, and there are a sizable number of projects. The construction valuation that's been issued is reflected in this chart. We certainly did see a decrease in 2022. It dropped back to being comparable to 2020. Again, some of that being due to projects choosing not to make that commitment to get an issued permit and then potentially start construction. Each step of the process represents a greater risk and financial investment. And Liz will talk about process improvements.
Thank you, Greg. As Greg mentioned, we have been working on a, I want to say it's more than 10 years, but we'll use the word 10-year cycle, and so as a result, we've had a lot of change in staff, we've had a lot of projects come through, and we haven't had as much time to devote to some of the process improvement work that we are looking at now. We've typically tried to use downturns in the development cycle as a point in time where we can look at our processes, look at the work we're doing, and look for efficiencies and way to do things better. We just haven't had that. So, we are seeing a little bit of slowing, and so we're trying to take advantage of that and start moving into some process improvement initiatives. So, we will be working on focusing our efforts on building resiliency so that we are more able to quickly respond to permit applications as they come in the door and get those. One of the ways we're looking at doing that is expanding our consultant resource pool, and that will provide us a little bit of an ability to send out some review, take the, take the top off so that we can keep getting the projects through. We're also looking at strengthening our performance management system. One of the other areas that we have realized that in the last 10 years we can do better is also meeting our customers where they're at. So, we've done some of that through virtual work. We have virtual permit centers, and we have learned how to have consultant meetings online. We do all of our permit review online, so we've done a lot there. But one area where we continue to need to improve and continue to work is where we meet our customers when they're our different customer base. We have a lot of customers who are one-time users. They come in, they want to put a deck on their building, their home, or maybe they want to open a restaurant, a small business. And that's really a hard customer type for us. We're definitely more keyed toward the professional development community, and so we're really going to be making an effort to find ways to assist those customers just as effectively as we are able to assist the professionals that come in the door. So, that is going to be a major focus of the work we're moving forward on. We're also looking at simplifying and streamlining our permitting, and as all of you know, since it's really been in your direction, we'll be using the affordable housing projects as some test case to try some things on. And some of those things around project management and such could eventually end up, you know, moving out to other permit types. So, we're using the Next Right Work initiatives as a way to showcase some things, streamline the permit intake process, and provide more staff support for applicants. So, a higher level of project management, and then we'll use these lessons as we move into our other process improvement work. In addition to this continuous process improvement that is already underway, Development Services is going to be updating our strategic plan. So, our strategic plan that we had, we had a five-year plan that finished actually a couple of years ago, but between COVID and the development cycle, we really didn't have a chance to go back and relook at it. So, we will be looking again at a five-year strategic plan update where we'll start to meter out how we can achieve these different goals. Part of that will be around technology upgrades. We're really working to improve the customer experience, especially expanding the virtual permit center, and the ways that we can provide assistance 24 hours a day to people through a lot of our virtual work. We're also looking at some technology upgrades that will also ease the administrative burden that both the city feels and our customers. So, some of the work on our records repository, our payment processing system, all of those things that nobody knows about because they just work, we're going to try and make them work better. And I don't think there will be a big notice immediately, but it will free up a lot of staff time so that they, we can use those resources for other, other areas. One of the other areas that we have found there has been a lot of change in the last few years is really our staffing. So, we are looking at how we can maximize our human potential and hire and train new staff. We're seeing quite a bit more staff turnover on a more rapid basis, so we realize that we really need to up our training so that we can have people be effective more quickly and feel comfortable and provide good, good service to our customers. So, we are improving our onboarding. We are looking to, for ways to retain current talent, and one of those ways is working with the Human Resources Department to make sure that we are a regionally competitive employer.
Thanks, Liz. This slide identifies the type of permit applications and issued permits that would benefit from the proposed permit extension ordinance. I'll note that the specific request from the development community was to implement a 180-day extension before the end of the first quarter, and that's what staff are responding to. Council has heard from the community with requests related to several items that go a little bit beyond that, and I'll speak to those. One is to have the extension ordinance applied to all projects that are vested under the 2018 Building and Construction Codes, and to have it include previously expired permits. So, I'll address the second part of that first. We cannot legally go back and extend applications or issued permits that already expired, and I can assure you that all of those have had the full benefit of all of the administrative authority that staff currently has to keep those alive. I'll speak to the second, keeping projects that are vested to the 2018 codes alive. The current proposed ordinance, if brought back to council, would have an effective date five days after council action. So, for example, that would be effective later in March. If the effective date was changed, for example, to July 1st, which under state law is when the city is required to implement the new construction codes, the 2021 codes, then it would pertain to all of those projects that are already in the door before July 1st and that vested to the 2018 codes. The potential downside to that is that there could be applications or issued permits that expire between now and then. So, staff responded to the specific request that we received. There was also, in communication to council, a request to allow additional administrative extensions, and of course, staff are open to continued conversations with the development community about all of this. I will note that the building official and the land use director do currently have limited authority to extend applications and issued building permits. We don't recommend significantly expanding that authority, but as noted, we're certainly open to more discussions. And last, there was a request to remove the three-year completion deadline, and that's in reference to the life of an issued building permit. There is, again, some administrative authority, authority for the building official to go beyond the three years, and I will note that a couple of code cycles ago, six or seven years, we introduced language in Bellevue City Code 23.05 that allows phasing of projects. So, for example, a high-rise project that needs a longer period of time for construction typically chooses to apply for a separate permit for the below-grade garage structure. They can start construction while the, a podium or high-rise structure is still being reviewed, and so those are phased out such that there is a time period that is well beyond three years. I think it's often up to five years, and that has seemed to work relatively well. And now, I'll ask Liz to talk about the land use vesting proposal.
Thank you, Greg. So, the proposed land use code vesting extension is a little bit different because we are proposing permanent regulations if staff would like to direct that. In that case, it would require changes to the land use code. And so, we are looking to have council discuss and provide feedback on whether you would like us to pursue permanent regulations to extend vesting. Currently, the land use code only allows a few different areas where the director can extend vesting. You can extend vesting for a critical areas land use permit. Excuse me. Hmm. And, my apologies. You may also extend vesting for shoreline exemption. In both of those circumstances, it has director's authority to do so, and, gosh, the one time I didn't bring water. So, there is no other ability to extend vesting. Some of the permit types that this would include would be a design review, would be a conditional use permit or an administrative conditional use permit. This would allow certainty for the development community and other stakeholders. There are large investments being made when people make applications, especially for a project for a design review. The current code allows for two years vesting. Oh, thank you. I will take one moment here. Thank you so much. The current code allows for two years vesting for those permit types, the administrative design view and such. If the council so directs, we would bring back for consideration a study session, an opportunity to extend that potentially another two years, but we would certainly be looking to council for direction on that when we got to the study session. This would align this with the other sections of the code that do allow for some extensions to vesting. And our request from the development community, they did, there was a request that we look at this in a more permanent, permanent code authority. In this case, this is something that many cities have, so it would also be consistent with many of our neighboring jurisdictions to allow for a bit longer vesting time for those, those projects. And just for a short explanation, when a land use code decision vests, it vests at the final decision. So, at the point the staff report is issued and it has gone through its appeal process, if there is any, that would, that is when that decision would vest to the land use code. The applicant would then have up to two years to apply for a building permit, and what we would be looking at is whether council would wish us to provide a little bit more time for the applicant to apply for a building permit after that final decision. So, the direction that we're looking for this evening is, well, threefold, really. You know, one is to adopt an ord, provide direction on adopting an ordinance to extend the time limits for the building and clearing and grade permit applications and issued permits. And then secondarily, we're asking that the council provide direction on whether you would like us to initiate amendments to the land use code to allow those administrative extensions to the vesting provisions of 204500. And also, we would ask that the council think about a finding of necessity to retain the processing of the land use code amendment rather than sending it to the planning commission. So, I will pass this back to you, mayor, and we are happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Okay, great. If we can leave this slide up, so you're looking for those, direction on those three items that you just described, and you kind of have to tease out the third one, which is the council retaining processing of the land use code as opposed to sending it to the planning commission. So, any comments or questions? Councilmembers, I want, we start with you.
Okay. Oh, thank you, mayor, and thank you, Greg and Liz, for working on this, because I do think that there is urgency to address the concerns from the developer community to really understand what's going on in our current market uncertainty, because we know that whether it's a developer or a homeowner in our community, that having some level of predictability will be really helpful during this volatile time where interest rates are really high and supply chain disruptions are happening. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration of the comments that came in and really trying to thread a needle between what we can reasonably provide in terms of accommodation and time extension, as well as not having it be so long that, that we ourselves run into concerns. I do have some questions and maybe a confirmation. So, in the slide related to the number of permits, it looks like there is just shy of a thousand permits that would be, that's currently in the pipeline, not issued, but in the application. So, potentially, the extension might apply to any number of those. Is that right?
Thank you, councilmembers. I'm happy to answer that question. The extension would apply to all active applications for building permits and clearing and grading permits and all active issued permits for building and clearing and grading, and it, it would definitely be in the thousands. I do not have the exact number at the moment, but I could certainly provide that to council.
Okay. I think that would be helpful. I think it might be helpful for us just to get a sense for, you know, what are these permits? And then, I would say that I would also like to understand, so when we talk about vesting, just so we're all clear, which impact fees would then apply? Because I know that sometimes those are adjusted. So, when we talk about the vesting and extending the 180 days, what's the implication of that? And then, potentially, we're talking about, you know, updating tree codes and some of those others. So, I, I would like to understand a bit more about the implications of that. I think this is a, a really important thing to work on and help with the predictability and the challenges, but I, I think it's important for us to understand the implications as well.
I can begin the answer on that. Thank you. In terms of the impact fees, you do not vest to impact fees. So, impact fees would be whatever they were at the point you were pulling the, the building permit. So, there would be no change to whatever the regular cycle of updates would be for the impact fees. In terms of the, when there are changes, like the tree code, I think that's a really good question because it's one that's obviously very top of mind. because it's one that's obviously very top of mind for everyone right now. In this particular circumstance, because we would be reviewing the tree removal for, as an example, single-family residents, that would be reviewed under the building code. And so this would allow, you know, this extension of potentially six months. There could be a scenario where there is a short period of time where the old code would still apply. However, in this case, it would really be up to council's discretion if they wanted to extend this. And I don't believe that we'll be getting the tree code to council for adoption before the next six months. So, you know, I think at that point, we could certainly look at whether council wanted to provide another building permit extension or not. But generally, it would vest you to whatever the code was in place at the point you got your approval. And you would then have another six months still using the code that was in place when you got your approval.
And is this a one-time, 160 days? So it's not one where you can apply once and then when that expires, ask again? Is that right?
Thank you, councilmember. You're referring to the 180-day extension specifically. It's one-time in the sense that it applies, well, let me clarify that. If a project is in application status, it can obtain the benefit of an additional 180 days in application status. And then if it, when it issues, it would have an additional 180 days. So it would go from three to three and a half years for the life of the permit without regard to any other extensions that the building official might have the authority to grant. If a project was in an issued permit status on the effective date of the ordinance, then it would only obtain the 180-day extension for the issued permit. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I'm really pleased to see this come to council. And it's an example of how we really try to work with our stakeholders. And I just thank you to staff for bringing this forward. I think it's really a good thing. I was really struck by Slide 7. Can you pull that up, please? Where it shows that the permits, construction valuation of permits for 2022 has fallen. But if you look at that, yeah, next one. If you look at the purple plaid, which, that is new residences, that has never been higher. That's over 200 million, and it's higher than any other bar in this. So the impact of this policy is really going to affect building new housing. And to the extent we get more applications for permits between now and June 30th, if we decide to build that in, it will probably also significantly impact housing. When the building code changes, as it will on July 1st of this year, building code, energy code, a whole bunch, all the I-codes, international codes, I think the history is that we tend to get a rush of applications right before the code changes. Do you agree with that, Greg?
I think that's accurate.
Yeah. So from my perspective, I don't want to delay adopting this ordinance, but I would like to build in to both the building permit, Section 1, and the clearing and grade, Section 2, where it applies to applications active on the effective date of the ordinance and to any complete building permit application submitted on or before June 30th. And same thing where that's, that date would go in twice on Section 1 and twice on Section 3 because we probably will see a lot of applications coming in, particularly for housing, between now and June 30th. And the new building code is always more expensive to build when the building code changes because, one, all of the people, all of the consultants that are drafting the plans and putting together the mechanical and all that stuff on application, they have to first get familiar with the new building code and then they need to change the plan. So anyone that's right now in the process of putting together their application, they, they can't do it under the 2021 codes, which will take effect on July 1st. So they can only do it under the 2018 codes that are in effect now. So I really think it would be fair and go with our policy of trying to make things easier for people building housing to change Sections 1 and 3 to also include applications submitted on or before June 30th, 2023.
Can I stop you there for a minute and ask staff to just kind of review what the pros and cons of that would be for the council?
So I would have to consult with the city attorney's office to see if there's a way to craft an ordinance that could accomplish what you've described, Councilmember Robertson. As I understood what I heard, I think you're looking for a time period from, say, the end of March through the end of June. And everything that's active as an application or an issued permit within that time period would get the benefit of the extension. Is that accurate?
That's absolutely, because I don't want to cut out active permits or applications that are in now.
Okay.
But I also want to make sure that we can extend.
Okay. I'd be happy to follow up with the city attorney's office and then get back to you.
That would be great.
If there's one, as I had mentioned earlier to respond to your question, Mayor Robinson, if there's one effective date, then it's just a snapshot in time. And it's whatever's active at that point as an application or an issued permit. And if that's the answer from the city attorney's office, then it may be that it's now or later, but it's one or the other.
Or do it now and do it later.
We'll explore those possibilities.
That would be great if we could get that back on that. And then I have two more comments. One is, I'd like to see this come back on consent at our next meeting, which is in two weeks, so that we can take action on it now. You know, well, now, relatively, two weeks. So that's number one. But I don't want to lose the thread on the other comments from some of our stakeholders. I think that we should, I would like staff to continue to work with our stakeholders about some of those additional requests. And maybe we consider them later if they still are needed. And then finally, on the land use permanent regulations, I definitely would like to learn more about that. I'd like to specifically have a briefing about that before it comes for either interim official control or permanent regs. I do think we should keep it. But I'm a bit concerned about extending vesting, particularly for, on land use, particularly for plats. They have really long periods anyway. And when they take, when you're vested, then you don't, for example, pick up the new tree code. You don't pick up other things that we might put into place that are really important to the people of the city. So any of those really long-time permits, I don't know that I want to make a permanent ordinance to extend vesting. I think that that's a really, we want to have a good policy discussion about that and understand the trade-offs. But the permits and the clearing and grade, I'm all over it. Let's do it. So, thanks.
So just a little pushback on the consent agenda. So it seems like there's some questions and there's some input we can get from staff before we make a decision on this. So I'm wondering, do we need to throw in a study session where we talk about this in a little more detail? Or is going to be okay to do this over email? But I think we all need a little more information. And I know there's going to be more questions as we go through here.
Sure, Mayor. Depending on the amount of questions. This item certainly could come back under other ordinances for a discussion and a vote to adopt.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, this is, I'm fine for it to come back on other ordinances, but if we all, for example, agreed that if we could legally extend it to June 30th, and that's the only change, and the city attorney's office agrees, then, you know, that's, that's just my thought. I just wanted to come back in two weeks, one way or another.
Councilmember Barxell.
Actually, I don't have any questions.
Okay, no comments either?
I support the proposal from staff. I do like the idea about divesting, I guess, in terms of aligning it with other cities and jurisdictions. So it brings a bit more of that predictability, so.
Any comments on consent in two weeks versus coming back for discussion?
I'm open to either.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes.
Basically, what's been said already, I think this is really a good thing to do. I think what would help is in a couple of weeks, if we could get a better picture of how all this fits in together. Because some things came up in your conversation that we really didn't hear about and talking about. It's complex, but it's, I agree with the overall way we're looking at this, it's very important. And, you know, they don't, I don't think there are a lot of drawbacks to doing this. And going forward is a very positive thing. And it actually has the, I think, the overall effect to have more work done and keep things on track instead of having to go back and forth on this in terms of both the developers or the homeowners or staff. So I think if we do go to the whole picture like you were talking about, in the long run, we're going to be in a better position to make these things go. And, you know, having gone through a recession, having gone through what we have those last few years, we know things just don't keep going in 10 years all the same. And so having a lot more flexibility, I think, is very good. So I'm very comfortable with going on this in two weeks, bring it back, and I think maximize the effect that this can have of keeping things going well, getting better connections. And I think in the long run, it's going to actually, I wouldn't say speed up, but actually make it a more effective way to get, get things done. And maybe, in a sense, the staff will actually have some better use of the time in terms of working on these things instead of having to process things over and over, kind of, so.
Councilmember Stokes, could you clarify if you're comfortable with bringing it back on consent or is it a discussion item?
Discussion item.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Yeah, I won't be here in two weeks, so I would appreciate not making the decision. I want to compliment the staff who have been very sensitive for the condition that we just discussed, why we need to, you know, extend this for various reasons. We've gone through this previously, during previous, you know, economic downturn, so that makes a lot of sense. And I think we heard the development community and what they have to say. I think it's good for everyone. The only concern I have is that you suggested a few things that the staff might do. I don't, you know, I don't know what that might do to the actual development. I think that's part of the conversation. What's the process you're going to do? Are we going to impact the future codes and rules and whatnot? I believe that by slowing things down doesn't mean that the staff has extra time and you can use that to do other things. And if that's the case, I want to know what other things are, you know, that might not be what we are, you know, giving you. I don't know whether we want to get into that kind of detail or not. I really don't know. I don't think we should. But I think that will address how we handle the extension because that's definitely a good thing to do. But then, while we are extending it, I think Councilmember Robinson mentioned, it may have certain impact to the new codes, to whatever other residential people are looking at, what commercial people are looking at, how all the detail might be affected. I don't know. So I would hope that if those things are affected, those things need to be determined. How do you, you talk about HR, how do you train people? All that's good thing, it's very good things. But I think that you should not detract from what we're talking about, which is helping the development through a slowdown in, you know, economy. And how do we make sure that they are going to be helped to make whole, that they will be there, they will do whatever they have to do? Then when the economy comes back, we'll have, you know, a healthy, you know, constr, building in the city. So that's why I want to say, basically, you know, I hope you understand what I'm saying. So I approve the concept completely, but I would like to have a little bit more extra time to understand what you're going to be doing, how you're going to do with additional resources or maybe no additional resources, how is it going to impact the other things that Councilmember Robinson brought up? And maybe, you know, you might share some lights about certain code changes and what may be a constraint, what may be a good thing, what may be necessary for the recovery, as we say, from the slowdown we might be looking at. So I would like to hear more. But I like the concept completely, no question about it. I support it, but I'd like to know a little more about the implication.
Okay. We may want to set up separate staff time with Councilmember Lee to answer all those questions. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Greg and Liz, for bringing this forward. Very excited that we're looking at this, especially with, you know, the changing market conditions as you, as you mentioned earlier, you know, interest rates doubling and construction costs rising, and then rents falling at the same time. So a lot of these projects are hard to pencil out right now. So, but very excited to keep this moving forward and coming back in two or three weeks, whatever it might be. I think, given the comments tonight, Mayor, I probably would say have this come under other ordinances, probably, for some additional conversation just in case we can't get all of our questions answered or we might have some additional ones. In fact, I was ready to move this forward tonight, but some of the great comments by Councilmembers on and Robertson and some of the great comments we've gotten from some of the stakeholders, I think a little bit more, more work on this is needed. But in general, very much want to, want to move this forward. I really like the comment by Councilmember Robertson about all the applicants that are active between now and June 30th being part of that extension of 180 days. I think that's important. And I really would like, and we can do this offline, but especially from some of the stakeholders like NAUP and others had some very specific questions or requests in there. I'd like to explore those as well in terms of potentially adding them to this. But we can do that offline. But I certainly would like to, because there does seem to be some duplication between the stakeholders in terms of some of their requests and/or insights into what this might look like. But, yeah, happy to keep moving this forward. And I'm so happy that we're at this point due to the changing conditions and we're being proactive. So thank you so much for the presentation tonight.
Thank you. And I'll just take a little turn here. I, too, echo Deputy Mayor's comment. You know, this is Bellevue being nimble, and I appreciate this work. What I really like is that you're assisting the first-time applicants with applying for home improvement and small business tenant improvement permits. I really appreciate that because as a council member, I receive emails a lot about those interactions. I appreciate the work we're doing to expedite affordable housing permits, and I'm looking forward to seeing how that manifests. Sometimes I wonder if we should have a permit ombudsman so the council doesn't have to function as that. And I would say that I think that there's a majority who would like to see this come back as a discussion item. And the things, I think, we want to know the impacts, the pros and the cons of are, one, the vesting time, the starting date, and the phasing of projects, if we could. Is there anything else that I haven't asked Councilmembers on? And then Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, so I just want to confirm we are still talking about this coming back on March 27th? Because I understand there's an urgency to, once a permit's expired, we can't resurrect it. So for every day that we don't implement, there's potentially permits that are expiring. So I guess I, that would be one thing I just want to impress upon the council is that if we are not going to have this come back on the 27th for a vote, that, just trying to understand.
No, it can come back for a vote. It can come back for a direction and a vote if we want, but it gives us a chance to have discussion as opposed to going on consent.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I just meant that it sounded like Councilmember Lee was recommending waiting beyond the 27th.
I don't think that there's a majority that are interested in that.
Okay. And then I just want to confirm that on the piece around the extension for the clearing and grading for plat infrastructure, that's the one related to the tree code. And, you know, I just want to make sure when you come back, know, I just want to make sure when you come back, you're going to provide us with some recommendation related to that, because I am concerned about, as we work on the tree code, vesting so that then permits are not subject to the new tree code. Thanks.
Okay. Good. And Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, so, all active applicants right now, or permits now, they will fall under this. If we push it out two weeks or three weeks, even if it expires, will they still get the benefit of the 180 days? Or if they expire tomorrow, for example, are they then not eligible?
Well, typically, when we know that we're this close to a potential council action to extend applications or issued permits, we would try to use all of the leeway that the current administrative code provides to keep an application or an issued permit alive.
Okay.
There are some that are, will be a little challenged to get all the way, but I think we can bridge certainly the two weeks and the five days to the effective date.
Okay. Great. And then also, just to add to the laundry list that the mayor had mentioned about the, some of the specific asks by NAOP and other organizations, I would like to get some feedback on that. I also want to echo the mayor's excellent comment about helping those that need a little bit more high-touch, the small shop owner, the restaurant, et cetera, getting them through this process. I'd really want to give you kudos for, you know, be it the technology upgrade or additional staffing, by giving them an ability to get through it quicker without understanding, or having a professional staff that can get this through quicker. So I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
So it sounds like there's an interest, I'll get right to you, it sounds like there's an interest to bring this back with a draft ordinance and draft land use code amendment and opportunity for discussion. Okay. Yes?
Mayor Robinson, I would just like to clarify, we will not be prepared to bring back a draft land use code amendment in two weeks. That one will be likely, you know, four to six weeks, you know, minimum, before we can come back on that, but we certainly would be.
That's the same schedule you had, otherwise, we're not extending anything, with having a discussion period, correct?
We would have the discussion period probably in that four to six weeks, and then bring it back, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. I'll go with Councilmember Robertson, then Councilmember Lee.
One, I wasn't sure if council gave direction, that I'm pretty sure they didn't, about whether they are interested in having, assuming that we legally can do it, the date from effective date through June 30th. We didn't hear a direction on that, and I think it would be helpful to staff if we gave them direction, so they can draft the ordinance when it comes back on the 27th.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor did.
Oh, he did? Okay, so that was included?
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure. And the second was, I wanted to clarify something that I think Councilmember Zahn was asking about, about the vesting date. So if the ordinance is passed with the, through the effective date, June, to June 30th change, the tree code would not be in effect before June 30th. So nothing in that would affect whether someone is vested to the code as it is today versus the new tree code, because vesting occurs at the time a complete building permit application is filed, or in the case of grading, when the clear and grade. So it, those two things don't go together right now, because we are unlikely to have that code in effect by June 30th. Do you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, so it wouldn't affect the tree code. If we extend it later, after the tree code is in effect, then it might, but otherwise, this would not affect the tree code. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. I'm supportive, and I'm supportive of also moving forward with the land use code. I just want to know more before we, that comes to council for primetime. Thanks.
Councilmember Lee.
I heard that, you know, this has to be passed in two weeks. You know, is that right? What happens if it doesn't, in three weeks, instead of two?
I don't think there's any specific requirement from two weeks or three weeks, Councilmember Lee. It is just the potential that maybe a few more permits would expire in that time period, so that would be the potential risk.
Okay. I always heard from Greg that, you know, you can handle it, or somehow you can manage. So I'm not sure, you know, how important this, that, you know, I don't participate, vote for it, versus, you know, maybe you can, maybe it's no impact to the people who are going to be vested or not vested.
Well, let's talk to Charmaine, the city clerk who handles our schedule, and also maybe consider participating remotely at that meeting, if that works for you, from DC. Yeah, Charmaine?
Well, I mean, they are the one who tells me.
No, but I want to hear.
Whether it could or not.
City clerks.
I like to hear from them. I ask first.
What you just heard?
I haven't heard. They said you don't have to.
No, they said you risk the potential.
Okay, and so you don't have to wait for two weeks or three weeks. That's what I heard. Okay?
Liz, would you like to?
So do you guys want to overrule me because you don't want to participate?
Excuse me. Would you like to repeat what you said, Liz?
There's really, as Greg mentioned, we can do a little finagling, as it were, to get through. However, the longer we extend it, the more possibility there is that some permit may expire and not be able to take advantage of this extension. So the timing is really for the council to decide, and we're happy to work with you in whichever timeframe you would like us to come back.
City clerk, do you want to weigh in on this a little bit?
We do certainly have time on the agenda on the 27th to bring this, if that's what the council chooses to do.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes, followed by Robertson.
Yes, I agree. I think we should move on it as expeditiously as we can, and delaying it another week could have some, you know, adverse effects. So it sounds to me, we're pretty much agreed on all this, and just getting the work done, and just bring it back in two weeks.
Councilmember Robertson.
So I was going to mention, with, I'm always in favor of being gracious and moving agenda items, that, especially ones that are not urgent, to when we have a full council here, or ones that are going to have a close vote. And so I certainly know, no disrespect to Councilmember Lee, who will be away on city business, but I think that we need to move this on the 27th, just because if we wait another week, there could be some permits that expire, and it's not fair to those applicants. So it's, since the entire council seems pretty resolute on approving this, I don't, you know, it's not going to be a close vote in two weeks, so no disrespect, Councilmember Lee. I certainly would vote to include you in this agenda item, should you decide you want to appear remotely on that, but I support having it on the 27th.
Sure.
If that's the case, we can vote tonight.
The reason we want to have another meeting is because we want to answer all those questions that we made a list about, so. And you can get information on the answers of that.
Yeah. Why, why don't you get me as much answers as you can, okay? And I will decide if I have no concern about the things you brought me, brought back to me, I don't need to vote, because you're going to vote for it, and I will vote for it, if necessary, remotely, okay?
Okay.
But I need to know what, you're going to find out, and see what position I would take.
Yeah, that sounds good. And we did offer you a staff briefing as well.
And then you might want to provide amendment to the earlier provision for me participating remotely.
Well, we, I don't think we have to do that. I think you can.
We can do that at the meeting on the 27th.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. So do, I don't think we need to make a motion on this, do we, since we're going to be bringing it back? What is your recommendation?
I'm.
Yes, Liz?
Yeah. I would wonder if you would, if council is willing and feels they have enough information to initiate the land use code amendment and move to retain processing for that. We could get that out of the way and then just come back on the 27th with the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. So there, remember, there were three things. One was to adopt the ordinance, the second one was to initiate amendments to the land use code, and the third one was to retain council processing of the land use code amendment. So why don't we make a motion for those, number two and number three, and see if there's any discussion or comments on those two?
On number two and number three?
So here, that's how I have it online.
Can you read that?
And the twos, this one, or two and three, yeah.
Okay. So I move the direct staff to bring back for adoption, appropriately extending the...
And initiate amendments to the LUCO and retain the council processing of the LUCO.
So.
Okay. Any, thank you. Any comments or questions on that? Yes, Councilmember Lee.
I support it, and I want to make a point to the staff. I apologize for putting you in this, on the spot, when we're asking you whether it'd be okay to bring it back in two or three weeks. So I would support this.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. And then the other one, I don't think we need to make a motion on, but you've got your instructions, and I have a list of all the things we want to get information on.
I'm sorry, somebody said no. Pardon? Does he need a motion?
I don't believe we do.
The look on his face made me think we needed a motion.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
I think we're good, but I also think that I have a list of everything that was brought up tonight, and anybody's free to send their questions to staff, and we'll get them answered at the next meeting, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. So our next meeting, actually, is canceled, and we're going to resume our council meetings on March 27th, 2023, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.